Good evening, I'd like to call and order this regular board meeting at the Round Lake Area School District Board of Education. At seven eleven P M on August nineteenth. If I can get started first with a roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Here.
Mrs. McGinley?
Here.
Mr. Jewett?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Klinger?
Here.
Alright, and first up with pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first up, we need an approval of an agenda and our two amendments to the existing agenda. Number one, we will be removing section eleven, part I. The independent contractor agreement will be removed. As well as the entire number seventeen, action resulting from closed session will not be occurring. So if I can get a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second to my Ms. Lee, roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries, we have an approved meeting agenda and first up on other communications to the board. And I will open this up with the first one, which is the NSBA National Conference, which is April fourth to sixth. And in conjunction with that, the COSBA National Conference, which also is in Atlanta. But is March twenty-third, somewhere in that area. The tail end of, the tail end of March, it's like two weeks before the NSBA. I know Annette has already made, looked at calendars and the only one that she would be able to attend would be the NSBA one, which is absolutely acceptable. Then Kevin, you stated COSBA, the earlier one?
COSBA for my district calendar.
Okay, wish I was worried about that. Okay, so I've got one, two, three going to COSBA. Scott, do either of those calendar dates work for you or?
Some will let it go either and. Four, that'd be great.
Now, four, four is going, if everybody goes, four is going somewhere, so. And to be completely honest, as much as I probably should go to COSBA. The later date for me would probably work a little bit better, so NSBA for me.
My spring vacation time is by lottery, so. I have to wait a little bit to figure out which one, but I'll make it work either way.
Right, then let's, well hopefully if it's lottery, then maybe you'll win the lottery and just plan on the NSBA one. Okay, so I think what I'm hearing, and let's, let me make sure that we've got this right. Would be there would be three going to NSBA this year, which would be Annette, myself and Ms. Lee. And then everybody else was choosing COSBA if I'm not mistaken? Did you get that? Okay. Alright, perfect, so that ties that up in a cute little bow. And next up, we'll go to the seat all governing board recap and that would be Mr. Jewett.
Alright, we had the meeting on the seventh, they did the member square in. Special recognition and since the, there's no, there wasn't a treasurer. Dr. Tim Thomas, who is one of the interim superintendents, is going to serve as the treasurer for this year. Or until there's another one found. There's an informational meeting about the extended school year. Information about the property train, where there's a vote on the property transfer of South School from seat all to Mundeline. And that was a positive vote, there's a presentation of the final budget. There's a one point six million deficit. And that leaves their fund balance right now at about fifteen million. And then there are some, that's obviously a point of something that is going to have to continue to get worked on. Superintendent highlights were around the review from ELS, which was a consulting company that went in. We see it all and did the assessment in July of twenty-three. The main areas of focus for the interim leadership is the design of new staffing model for student population and aligned to the instructional design. Collaborative program design between Seattle and the membership and develop a committee and process for seat all and district leaders to evaluate the services. And there will be a continuous improvement plan based on the follow-up findings from ELS presented to the executive board on the twenty-second. This concludes it.
Any questions for Mr. Jewett, thank you. Alright, hearing none. Next up is my report on the Board Presidents Academy visit that I was able to do. This was the inaugural year that I A S B is having a Board Presidents Academy, there's actually three different sessions. One was held in Naperville, one in Champagne and one down in Collinsville, which is basically East St. Louis. It was a great opportunity to be able to communicate and network. Funny thing was that I get down there thinking, okay, well, I ended up by my schedule having to go down here. And at my table, I've got Woodlands President for the elementary district. And one twenty-seventh, no, one seventeen's Board President from Antioch. So it was like, wow, we traveled a long way just to see each other from home. But it really good, great, please review the info that was attached and if you have any questions. Not going to waste too much time yapping about it here, but it's definitely great education opportunity, just like all the other education opportunities we have as board members. Whether it's triple I, whether it's NSBA, whether it's COSBA. The I A S B education modules that are online, the dinners, the whole nine yards. So cannot more highly recommend it. Any questions for me when it comes to the Board Presidents Academy?
One piece of new learning.
Probably the biggest one is staying up to date with, with your legislators. And staying in tune with what's going on in Springfield. Just because that changes so rapidly and so fast. That if you're, if you don't stay on top of it, you're going to get blindsided by things like date changes. Financial changes, the whole nine yards. Alright, next up, we will turn it over to Dr. Kivens, I believe, and the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five sponsorship program update.
Thank you, President Francisco, so at the request of the Board of Education, we are providing an update on the sponsorship program. This relates directly back to the beautiful video scoreboard that we have on the high school stadium grounds. In addition to indoor signage in the main gym. We started the sponsorship program in twenty-one, twenty-two. And at that time, we, at the conclusion of that year, did some reflection and some revision of our current program. Which now the current program that you see has not changed since that revision and edit at the end of the twenty-two school year. We have four programs, four levels of sponsorship from elite at three thousand and five hundred. All the way to a blue level at one thousand five hundred. As we look at our overall background of where the program has started. As you see in the chart below, we started with a sponsorship back in twenty sixteen with Meyer with an agreement that went ten years. That agreement, we wanted to maintain and certainly honor those conditions of that agreement, so that's why it's a standalone listed here. That was a very generous twenty-five thousand dollar donation back to us, the district. After the conversations at the finance committee level, we will be reaching out to them sooner than later to see if they'd like to re-up the agreement. In some way, shape or form, and certainly if twenty-five thousand dollars is another venue, we will graciously bring that back to the board for consideration. As you look at the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that was a two thousand dollar revenue that was with Kia District One. That was the sole sponsor that was out there. And then as the years progressed, you will see increases in revenue from twenty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to eleven thousand seven oh eight thirty-three. That number is an odd number in terms of the sense that are listed. We did have a sponsor that wanted to come on mid-year, so rather than say no, we prorated what that level would be, which is why you have the number the way it is. And then currently for twenty-four, twenty-five, that revenue brought in is at fourteen thousand five hundred. High school administration has confirmed that we don't have any prospects in the, in the hopper, as we say. But we're certainly always going out to look. And thank you to Mr. Carolzak for confirming some information that came up at finance committee meeting. We have four open slots on the front and five confirming on the back open slots. Understood any questions, if there's any need for clarification from the board?
I just wanted to add, this was, as Dr. Kivens just mentioned, this was on the finance committee agenda. So it's just that review of where we're at with our sponsorship program. So as you hear, we have a few open spots still. Obviously, our desire is to have that board complete and it's not that, from lack of trying. And then of course, also trying to maintain the sponsors that you see listed before you. That we maintain that relationship so they want to renew. Then of course, finance asset, make sure we reach out to Meyer with plenty of notice. Maybe not our regular renewal cycle because they've had this in place for so long. Making sure that they get ample notice, hopefully they'll want to renew. Again, if they want to give another twenty-five thousand, we are always welcome to receive that. But just want to make sure Meyer has that notification. Because I'm sure when we did this, that person may not be there. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll leave it to Dr. Kivens for the next two as well.
So again, at the request of Board of Education, we have an investment update. As you review this investment update and think about perhaps prior conversations or information with the board, it looks a little different. The market has been extremely volatile and so some of our investments in the past have been more treasury bond located or treasury bill located. Those markets are down at this point. And so at this point, our money is best capped in what we call the liquid money market at home with State Bank of the Lakes. It is liquid money, meaning we do have access to it at any time. The rate does vary anywhere between five point three five, all the way up to five point six five. If you have a chance to glance at the treasurer's port, those back pages with the State Bank of the Lakes daily average yield is listed there. And so at this point, it's my recommendation, even though I'm monitoring the markets daily, to maintain those liquid funds because we're getting the highest amount of yield. However, we did catch the market on an upswing and so we did invest five million dollars in a treasury bill that is set to mature in November. At five point three four five, that's higher than what current treasury bills are paying and higher than most money markets at this point. And so when that treasury bill matures, the district will earn a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in interest.
And again, this was on the finance agenda earlier this evening. And as you heard Dr. Kivens say, currently it's best to keep our money, our monies where they're at with State Bank of the Lakes. As you know, we've invested in bonds off and on this last couple of years. But currently, this is the best place to keep our money, but you know, Dr. Kivens and I obviously stay in contact with how we're investing and where money is. And it's definitely, you know, we're doing really well currently.
Next on the agenda is budget assumptions for fiscal twenty-five and the August nineteenth report. As you look at the budget assumption document, we have three items that are new to us. Item number two is the fiscal twenty-five confirmed evidence-based funding. This is our state revenue funding, the new money that we're receiving for fiscal twenty-five is two million four hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars and thirteen cents. Our total gross that we are receiving in evidence-based funding for fiscal twenty-five is eighty million, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. We are a tier one district, we're retaining our tier one status. The adequacy target that we're at, they round up, so it's seventy-five percent, it's actually adequately at seventy-four point seven percent, but they round up to seventy-five percent. So that is a number two on the item that is listed new in budget assumptions. Also a number thirty-eight, there is an additional decrease in certified staff through attrition. So that brings a credit back to us on the revenue side. And then also on line sixty-seven, in previous budget assumptions, we did not list the purchase of Zero Heart Road. But at this point, with that contract being solidified by the board pending due diligence, it would be most appropriate to list that here. And so with all of those additional adjustments and our credits back to our budget. We are retaining a positive budget side of one million nine oh four, two seventy-five and thirty-eight cents.
One additional thing for the board's consideration is, as Dr. Kivens said, we're at seventy-five percent. I believe districts that are at seventy-seven or higher are tier two. So if we flip into the tier two category, our funding is going to drop, we're going to get an increase, but the level of the increase drops. I can't say for sure that's going to happen because there are other districts that go from tier two to tier one. So they go in from the higher tier to the lower tier based on the funding allocation. So I think we're probably going to be a little bit more conservative on the revenue side when we bring the budget assumptions back, probably in November. If not sooner, so just making the board aware.
And just reiterating what Dr. Kivens and Dr. Mendoza said, this was on the finance committee. You know, as we always are planning for today and always looking towards tomorrow. And as, as, as Dr. Mendoza said. What those funds will be for next year. And then as Dr. Kivens mentioned, regarding line sixty-seven with the purchase of Zero Heart Road. That's the new thing for this budget assumptions that you have before us.
Perfect with that, any additional questions? Alright, then next up is Dr. Stefan with our summer programs.
Alright, thank you for having me, it's hard to believe we are here doing summer programs review again and our school year has started. But we'll just go through the various different programs that we offered throughout the summer. And then wrap up with some kind of after-action review of some recommendations we have moving forward. So to start off with, I wanted to note that all of our in-building programs, we have summer school programming this year at McGee. For kindergarten through eighth grade, here at the high school for high school students, also at our transition center. And all of those locations, we did provide breakfast and lunch in both, in all three of those settings. So our first program that we want to review is our kindergarten countdown camp. This was a free program for, that we've done for several years in partnership with United Way. We had forty-three students participate in three different classrooms. And the focus was on your basic kindergarten skills such as recognizing shapes, numbers, letters, following directions, learning classroom routines and those types of activities. That you traditionally see in a kindergarten classroom. Moving on then to our next program, we had the middle school summer program, which is a continued program from last year. This program is required for students who are failing to our more core subject areas at the middle school level after their year of schooling. We had a hundred and sixty-two middle school students that were enrolled for this current school year. The students worked on comprehensive science projects, so this was the same curriculum that we used last year. We got a lot of positive feedback on that curriculum because it was very hands-on. And we did see quite a significant increase in the number of staff that were interested in teaching this. So we were pretty excited about that, just knowing that the kind of word was getting around that this was a fun course to teach. So that was a definite positive for our middle school programming. Moving on to our high school programming, we continue to have credit recovery that's designed for students that are behind in earning their credit. Students have to demonstrate a proficient level of learning in order to pass the course and therefore to earn credit. So we can see, Mr. Devera, there were two hundred and thirty-six students enrolled and a hundred and seventy-seven students earned credit, sorry. Another high school program that we offer is our honors bridge program. This is designed for students that we would like them to gain a deeper understanding of the critical skills will be necessary to be successful in an English and math honors level course at high school. Prepare students for eventually getting to AP coursework and we had fifteen students enrolled in that program this year. Moving on to our newcomer programming, this was offered both at McGee and at the high school for kindergarteners through twelfth graders. We had a total number of thirty-eight elementary students participate and sixty-two secondary students. The cool thing we added this year was the field trip piece. We really wanted to have a focus on getting these students out into the community and experiencing what it is and just knowing more about American culture. So those field trips included getting out to Lake County Forest Preserves. Took them to the library, got their library card, took them out to eat at a restaurant. On the next slide here, there's some pictures of the students engaging that, the picture on the bottom right is the kids at Buffalo Wild Wings. I get a kick out of the cooking picture down there, they actually picked different American recipes. And then they took them to Meyer and they went shopping. Their American meal was baked beans, sloppy joes, mac and cheese and cupcakes. Welcome to America. I thought that was great. We think in the pictures, there might have been some potato salad in there, which would also be very American, but I was texting with Melanie like, what is that? Is it potato salad? We weren't quite sure, but that, I thought was great for the kids, really helped them just kind of get engaged in the culture. We do offer high school credit for the high school age students that are working in the coursework as well. Next, we move on to our extended school year programming for our students with an individualized education plan. The primary focus for E S Y is to address student regression in reading, writing and math. So that is really the area of focus. A big thing they focused on, you can see the numbers here of students that participated, there were twenty-two elementary students, seventeen middle school and eight high school students. But what they really did this year is looked at the students' I E P goals and then their benchmarks and looked at previous benchmarks. So maybe where were we hoping that, you know, our goal was for the spring and maybe if a student didn't meet it, or we want to make sure they maintain that goal. And then also looking at the benchmarks that were coming on those students' I Ps for the fall. So really focusing on individualizing that instruction. And they did that through individual, they did a lot of small group activities. So you could have students that sometimes were working individually on their own independently. And then also there was opportunity for like teacher-guided small group instruction. Moving on to then the Round Lake Transition Center, we had a horticulture focus again this year as we did last year with our awesome greenhouse out there. So students were learning about horticulture and the practical application. Students planted flowers, we had some great flowers as well that they would take care of outside of our location at the Educational Service Center. Nope, support center, sorry. And students also grew herbs for use in cooking experiences throughout the program. We did continue to run our summer tutoring program for families that were already connected through tutors through our Twilight Tutoring Program. We offered for them to be able to continue in the summer if they were interested. So you can see kind of the analytics there and the number of tutors that we had working in the summer and the number of students that they supported. Oops, oh boy, that one quick, sorry. Our summer theater program, we, we had a huge turnout for those performances with about ninety to forty, ninety people for one of the performances, forty for the others. But we had thirty-five kids ages from first grade through twelfth grade. They were coming in June for four weeks, four hours a day, four days a week. And their performance was obviously Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. Moving on to our rolling summer buses, we had our art bus again this year and then we did change the name up a little bit. Instead of science bus, we had a STEM bus and we incorporated some math skills into that. You can see a long fun list of projects that were covered in, on the different buses. We averaged, our buses this year were incredibly well-attended. We think we kind of hit the sweet spot with working with increasing communications. We added some postcards out into the community, we added neighborhood signs to let people know that the bus was on its way. We also picked one location, when we originally rolled this out, we were kind of going all over the community. And we got a lot of feedback that people were confused, what park are you at today, what community are you in today? And certain parks had higher rates of attendance, so we decided to stick to one location and we were at the Round Lake Beach Park. And stayed there and saw tons of families showing up regularly. So it was definitely that, that it didn't go well in the past, but significant increase in attendance. So just some really fun pictures, one of the things that we added this year was, we had blankets set aside and brought in a bunch of different manipulatives and things for little sensory toys. For younger siblings that maybe wouldn't have been able to navigate some of the projects that we had going. But that really helps some of those younger kids also be involved in the activities, we want to continue that moving forward. We also continued to have the steam table at El Mercadito, the farmer's market over in Round Lake Beach. Lots of fun projects would go on at the farmer's market as families were shopping around, it was just a fun stand for them to be able to stop at and engage in some things with the school district. So at the end of summer school this year, I know that Heather had talked to the board about the after-action review process and we've used that for a lot of different. Sometimes we use it when things don't go so well. I would not argue that summer programming didn't go well, I thought it went really well this year. But we really want to every year go through and review what's working really well, what did we miss, what could we do better? So I went through the process to use the questions of, we looked at, let me make sure I don't forget anybody. We sent the survey and noted that there are tons of departments that are interrelated in this process. From human resources, teaching and learning, transportation, food service, safety, technology, communications and our building administrators. We all have to be very connected with summer programming. So I sent the survey to all of the people that fit into that bucket. I had a section for each one of those department and I asked two pretty simple questions of what went well. And what challenges were encountered and then what were any notes for improvement? And went through then what people shared as far as what went well, what could be improved and what were some challenges. So I've listed them on the next couple of slides here. One thing we have learned is we really don't want to do elementary and middle school in the same spot if we don't have to. Clearly, we needed to do that this year due to all the moves, but it was just tricky. We had two different pickup spots at one point and little ones, you know, little kindergartners never been to school in their life with eighth graders. There weren't any problems, it just presented more challenges logistically in the building. And I think we're better off running elementary programming in one location and middle school in another location, so we'll do that moving forward. We know that we had some struggle with registration and transportation logistics, like pleviac kept popping up again as a school and our registration. So just, you know, with a lot of the different moves, we want to make sure that we're working through those. We want to review our funding sources, almost all of our high school programs were paid for through Esser. That will be gone, so we do have the after-school grant, so we can use that, we have used that also in the past. But I, I feel confident that we'll be able to really look at the programming and review its funding. Just to give you a little context, our special education idea grant, as well as our Title III language learner funds. Can pay for summer school staffing and for the last three years, we have not used funding for that because we've had Asser. We did historically do that, so we'll have to kind of go back to those practices which we've all been talking about and known for three years. So that will be something we'll take a close look at. We want to, we changed one thing this year with E S Y, we provided a little bit of curriculum hours for the teachers we hired. To better prepare and review I E Ps going into the program. to better prepare and review I E Ps going into the program. So we want to continue that. We got great feedback from the staff that that was super helpful and they felt very prepared to support the kids. I already mentioned that the STEM bus communications definitely were ramped up and that we think had a lot to do with the increased attendance. And then a few more pieces, we really, there's a lot of us that work year-round, whether we're administrators or support staff in some way. And we want to find ways like, I think it was Jess and Chrissy were saying, like, our tech department would have loved to have gone to Robot Day at the bus, but we didn't tell them that there was Robot Day at the bus. So getting some of us like out to those buses to just engage with the community, I think would be fun for us in the summer. So that's something that we thought about, maybe getting us connected to that activity with the community, increasing access and communication for our Honors Bridge. Fifteen kids in that program is not enough. We have way more than fifteen students that participate in our honors programs. So we want to see if we can do some things to get those students to come out for our program. One little thing with food service was just the first day, the logistics was tricky. So that's something I'll help building admin, connect to the food service people so they know the schedule really well. It was bumpy, but I mean, first day usually is, but that was feedback I got from the team. And then finally, review schedules with bus arrival and food times to ensure instructional time matches. Because if buses show up five minutes late, you need less curriculum. If the food's coming at one time, we just, we had a little bit with schedules in there to make sure that our curriculum is actually the amount of instruction that's occurring. So again, lots of good feedback from the team. Overall, I thought our summer programming this year was outstanding. I was really excited with what I was hearing happening in the schools and out in the community. I love that we do it in both locations, so. Are there any questions?
You have a question regarding the kindergarten countdown camp. You said that's in connection with United Way?
Correct.
So is forty-three the max amount of participants we can have?
No, they have always offered to us that they would pay for four full sections. And the last year, we actually only had two sections. I was excited we got it to three. But it is something that we have worked really closely with. The Rotary Club was trying to help recruit for it. Sarah Swanson was everywhere. We had it public, I think it was posted at the library. It's really something we tried. They focus on students that have never experienced school, so never been in pre-K. So we have access to our own pre-K students. So eventually, they started with, can we get kids that have never been in pre-K? But then if we only, I think we only had two sections or two small sections. So I said to Sarah, can we open it up to our own students? And they do. But again, they're looking to first support kids that have never been in a school setting. And then from there, they'll open it to our pre-K students. But it is a program that is out there. But we haven't been able to fill it to the four sections that United Way has offered because they pay for all of the salary. We just have to cover the benefits. So it's not an expensive program for us to run in any way. And I would love to see us get more numbers.
So then it seems like we need to maybe be more creative in that outreach into the community.
Yeah, I would agree.
Think of, I can't believe we can't fill all four sections.
I know. I was calling Sarah every week and I don't have in front of me. I can certainly get back to you exactly. I know Rotary Club was for sure one she was working with. Exchange Club, yes, thank you, Heather. I'm not, I'd have to ask Sarah. I don't want to misstate, but I know that she was definitely contacting a lot of different people to try to get the word out there. It was definitely on our social media I saw, but.
Like even like even township?
That I'm not sure I'd have to ask.
So that would be somewhere we should be utilizing to find those families.
Yeah.
They do a lot of outreach programs there that families come in in need.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
I mean, we should be. And then, you know, are we putting stuff even at our village halls for the community?
Yeah, I can, I can for sure come back and let you know exactly where we posted and where we advertised, and then we can brainstorm ideas of what we can do in the future. There's always more.
Just surprised we can't fill all four sections.
I would agree. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
I just, to, I just wanted to give you a little feedback because I had a child that was in the Honors Bridge.
Yep.
And so she has several AP classes this year and she's a ninth grader.
Yep.
And it was funny because she mentioned that it helped kind of make her feel more prepared for what was coming. So I wanted to highlight that for you guys because I thought it was good feedback and I think it will help with that wraparound effect we talk about all the time, but yeah, so good job on that.
Yeah, I, again, fifteen students, in my opinion, is not nearly what we could get. But I appreciate the feedback for sure, that that is absolutely the goal, to help them feel more comfortable coming in already to a new school, being a high schooler, but then the level of taking rigorous courses adds a whole nother level of stress to the kids, so. Yeah, thank you.
Additional questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And next up is just a review of the disposal list Dr. King has provided for us. Any questions for the administration in regards to that from the board? Hearing none there. We'll next go to the review of the FOIA report. Again, posted, any questions from the board in regards to the FOIA report? All right, hearing none. Review contracts less than a thousand. We did not have any. Which will then bring us to public comment. As always, members of the public may participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or by submitting electronic public comment form. Please note that speakers are limited to three minutes of time. Electronic public comments are accepted up until noon on the day of the regularly scheduled meeting. The public commenter will be contacted by confirmed identity. And once confirmed, the electronic public comment will be provided to all board members in written form. A link to the electronic public comment form is online. We did receive electronic public comment and the board did receive that via email, so everyone had a chance to review that. Thank you for that electronic public comment. Next, I'll turn it over to local public comment. And does anyone want to step up and have a local public comment? Seeing none, we will now move to the superintendent's report and Dr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Board President Francisco and Board of Education. I'd like to communicate that consistent with board policy, we've listed a set of donations. A letter will be sent to the district to each donor. One hundred and twenty-five supply backpacks by the United Way for the entire district. Backpacks with school supplies donated by the chapel in Grayslake to Alice. Backpacks with school supplies donated by the Great Lakes Credit Union also to Alice. And backpacks and toiletry kits, fill a heart for kids also to Alice. Like to congratulate and acknowledge the board for achieving, again, financial recognition. We're pleased to announce that the board has been awarded the Association of School Business Officials International's Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending in 2023. This award represents a significant achievement and reflects the district's commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. That's a big deal, so. Also, another board recognition, congratulations to the school board as they have been awarded the School Board Governance Recognition Award. This award acknowledges the school board for their effective governing behaviors and their commitment toward obtaining the knowledge and skills necessary to effectively lead the school district. The board has earned this two-year award every cycle since 2016. Congratulations to all of you. And for your convenience, we have listed upcoming events, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. Any questions for Dr. Mendoza from the board? Hearing none. We'll turn it over next to the committee reports, as we did have a finance committee meeting prior to the general board meeting, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Negrete-McGinnler.
Thank you. Yes, we had a finance committee meeting. We've already reviewed some of the agenda items, but I'm going to start from the beginning of the finance agenda and always encourage everyone to review. We had a contract with Grit Leadership. This is from Mr. Carol Zach. This is an opportunity for increased professional development for our coaches and increased voices for our students. Grit Leadership has a web dashboard for, that could be used by our athletic department for scientifically-created student athletes data that we could do end-of-season surveys. Surveys provide coaches with more efficient feedback, as well as for our athletic program. This could be crucial for our growth mindset and promote greater conversations with our athletics. So this will be data-driven, more engaged student surveys, give us great feedback and maybe pose different questions. This is a three-year contract, but we do have an out after the first year, so after the first year of using it, we see that maybe it's not performing or it's not maybe what we had hoped. Then we can get out of that contract with no penalty. It is currently being used by Libertyville High School. And they seem to have good feedback in regards to using it. The questions, you know, that we ask is what data will be provided to the board? So Mr. Carol Zach will incorporate that in his quarterly reports, you know, as that data is driven. And then we just asked what positive feedback, which Mr. Carol Zach will get for us, that Libertyville has had in using that. But we are in support of it. We would like to see what this could offer Round Lake and how we can, again, improve coaching, student feedback, what it could possibly do for athletics. And again, if we don't see that it offers anything, then of course we can get out of that contract. And next, we had an independent contract agreement with Ms. Lyndell Collins. Again, she just, you know, with TRS, things are just a little tricky. So that will come back to us. Obviously, we don't ever want to jeopardize anybody's TRS. You heard in regards to the sponsorship update from Dr. Kibbins earlier. You heard in regards to the investment updates from Dr. Kibbins earlier. Later on the agenda, we will speak to the 2024, 2025 second meal, an extra piece of fruit. And we, the tentative budget, budget assumptions. And then later also we'll have the theater updates, pre-ACT assessments, and then B-PAC will be up on the agenda. And then, under the informational items, and we apologize for being tardy to start the meeting, but we had a little tour of the sound system that was just installed into the gymnasium, and it sounds really good. I just had one piece of feedback that I think we'll get. Mr. Kozak will get back to us on regarding that sound, but it is absolutely phenomenally better than what we had. And then, just to, again, speak to some of the informational items, there's also for beach playground. So again, as we've transitioned to a partner school, we need to make sure we have equipment for students, and that's regarding that item. And then, any questions? Anything to add?
All right, as always, great, great stuff. Thank you for that. And next, we will go to approval of open meeting minutes.
Need a motion to approve the August 5th, 2024 regular board meeting minutes.
So moved, second.
Motion by Ms. Klinger, second by Ms. Larson. Hearing no questions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the following items. The accounts payable report for $1,361,679.14. Previous motions report for $1,242,918.17. The June 2024 Treasuries Report, July 2024 Treasuries Report, July 2024 P Card Report, and the August 19th, 2024 Employment Report.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second by Ms. Klinger. Hearing no questions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, then we should have introduction of new administrators.
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Randolph, principal at Round Lake Middle School, here tonight to announce or welcome a new member of our admin team, Michelle Miller. She will be joining us with eighteen years of experience in education. She was a high school science teacher, department lead, member of the instructional leadership team, and an MTS coordinator. Now, as an administrator, she was a teacher induction supervisor, assistant principal. And outside of work, Michelle loves camping, boating, and spending time with family and friends. I'm just, I'm excited to have her aboard. We've got a lot of good things going on at Round Lake Middle School. I'm really excited for this year, and I think she's going to be a great addition. And last year she joined, or last week she joined us and has hit the ground running, and we're not looking back, so.
Thank you, John. I just want to say thank you to all of you for allowing me this opportunity to be able to learn from some really great leaders that I have met so far, and also to grow as an administrator in this district. So thank you.
I do want to say to the board, not really planned on this, but John has really just started over there and just getting some really, really positive feedback from the community and from the staff. I'm personally very pleased with how easy his transition, in fact, both of our two middle school principals, so just wanted to compliment them in front of the board, so.
All right, well, that will bring us to old business. And first up on that is the contract with Mad Bombers for fireworks for the back-to-school bash and homecoming.
So I'm going to lead off a little bit here. As you see in the contract agreements, one of them is dated for August 23rd, which is around the corner, and the other is for October 4th. I did reach out to Ms. Negrete-McGinnler and ask for authorization to sign the August 23rd document so that a permit could be secured from the village and appropriate measures could be done. We know moving forward, we need to be a little bit more timely with these documents. But in order to have this event and certainly support our community, I did ask for that authorization, which she did grant.
Thank you, Dr. Kibbins. To sort of piggyback off of the point that Dr. Kibbins just made, we'll be adding it to the the annual renewal list moving forward, so this will be taken care of in April moving forward. But then, yeah, the other request is that you review and approve signing the contract for fireworks at the October 4th homecoming games. Our girls' flag football team will play at five against Grant. And the varsity tackle team will play at seven against Grant, and there will be fireworks as both teams take the field and hopefully, hopefully a lot of them every time they score. And then a show to end off the evening and take us into the homecoming dance on Saturday.
Did you ever get an answer regarding, you know what I'm going to ask?
Yeah, the vendor is not currently interested in offering us a multi-year deal that'll lock in price. They said they basically have too many uncontrollable valuables, uncontrollable variables. And, yeah, and valuables, they're, they're they're overhead, they're concerned about. It's, their cost has increased each of the last five years, so. But despite that, they're, they've been the lowest bid every year and they do really good work, so. I envision continuing to work with them.
Yeah, no, they do, but it doesn't hurt to ask the question. But as long as we, again, you know, get this on a better rotation, so it's before the board in a more timely manner, then I think we're good. Uh but as long as we, again, you know, get this on a better rotation, so it's before the board in a more timely manner, then I think we're good.
Absolutely. It'll be added to the annual uh renewal list and um. I'll be reaching out to them the, on October fifth to schedule next year's.
Sounds good.
Just for clarification, we did not bid fireworks. It was a quote um for.
Did I say bid? I'm sorry. My mistake. Quote.
I think sometimes we use it interchangeably, so.
Yeah, I know better, though. I apologize. I misspoke.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agreement in the amount of eight thousand, seven hundred dollars for firework displays. At the high school, McGee adds the long sight on August twenty third and October fourth, twenty twenty four.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second to my Mrs. Larson. Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, and that brings us to the second reading and adoption of board policies. Um Ms. Bennett went over that two weeks ago with us with the first reading. Does the board have any additional questions for the administration? In regards to clarifications or any of the amendments?
And just to make a note, I did make some changes to the um names listed for the policies at. These six policies at the bottom of the memo.
All right, hearing no additional questions for Mrs. Bennett, then.
This is discussion only.
No, this one's discussion only? Perfect. Yay, discussion. All right, then next up we will move to new business.
Need a motion to approve the Board of Education travel expenses reimbursement related to the twenty twenty four. Isbe Board President, President's Academy.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, second to my Ms. Lee. Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Upstairs.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve expenses related to the Board of Education travel, meals and lodging. The National School Board Association Advocacy and Equity Institute.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second, I'm gonna give it to Mrs. Klinger. Two, I do wanna bring up um, right now it is still uh Mrs. Negretti McGinnley and myself on this one. Did anyone else have availability for this one and had any interest in doing this? Again, these are really good advocacy. It uh usually it's a chance to actually be able to sit down with. U S House members uh in person in their office in DC. I know we, I've been pushing it for for a while now, but um again. If if you don't, this time we understand, but keep an eye open. Uh again, there's gonna be another one coming up um in February. Uh that is an NSBA, uh well, no, this is the NSBA one, but again, um sorry, but. There's multiples of them, so please keep it in mind because these are really good advocacy departments and. Much like Mr. Jewett asked me, it's it's that advocacy is probably one of the biggest things that we can. Do as elected board members that we probably don't do enough of. All right, hearing no additional conversation, roll call please.
One second, I do have a question. Are you guys aware that the per diems listed is different amounts on B and C?
Uh well, which one then? Uh probably because B, B is a different city than with DC.
I I didn't know. I just, I just noticed they were different, so that's why I was just asking.
That's the variance, but Dr. Kibbins?
Yeah, I just noticed in B and C that per diems are listed different. I didn't, I didn't know if there's a reason for that or if it was a typo or what.
I can, I can respond to that. So um according to the IRS rates, there are certain communities or certain cities that are considered. Higher, more expensive to eat, and we wanna make sure that you're well fed and well rested, so we uh.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't a typo because I just noticed it.
Yeah, and just keeping in mind that 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 um the ISB board, uh sorry, the advocacy is in DC. And NSBA is in Atlanta. And amazingly, and I even see this with my corporate world with Allstate, Atlanta is considered a low-cost city. Uh DC is.
Boardwalk food. DC does not have boardwalk food.
And Chicago is considered a high um rate city, too.
No, uh great question. Thank you for that. All right, hearing no additional, we will go to roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now I forgot where we. Uh I need a motion to approve the Board of Education twenty twenty five NSBA National Conference Travel and Related Expenses. Estimated at three thousand, sixty six dollars and fifty cents per attendee.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Devera, second to my Mr. Jewett. And just as a clarification here, this one is the NSBA one. Um which per our conversation earlier, this meeting would be uh four individuals. At the three thousand and sixty six dollars and fifty cents per. Sorry, you're right. I'm mixing. Thank you. You're a hundred percent right. I'm I'm mixing them. Cause they're both in Atlanta. Um correct, it's three. Uh so it would be for NSBA, it's um. Mrs. Negretti McGinnley, myself and Ms. Lee. And then the four of you will be doing the same Atlanta just a little bit earlier. Before I confuse it even more and make it worse, roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, I think now Dr. Kibbins. Second piece of fruit.
Correct, correct. Now we're to the second meal and extra piece of fruit.
So this would be in addition to the current meals that our students are eligible for. We are community eligibility. Provided uh district CEP, and so currently our district uh students at the elementary level receive a breakfast and a lunch. At the middle school and the high school level, they receive a breakfast and a lunch, and if they're involved in an extracurricular activity. Um they would then get a supper. So this potentially could be a fourth meal for students at the middle school and high school level. Uh the rates that are listed there are based on what we would consider reimbursable costs for that extra piece of fruit and for the um. Lunch. And in addition to, this does not um take away from any what we'd considered. Extra items that would be available at the middle school like cookies or chips or those items. Um this is strictly a meal.
So this was on the finance agenda as I alluded to earlier. So again, we've done this uh historically, offering. This second meal and and piece of fruit to our students. As we know, our student athletes and just our children need and dependent us for these meals.
Hearing no additional questions?
All right, I need a motion to approve the second meal at three dollars and seventy five cents, an extra piece of fruit at a cost of seventy five cents.
So moved, second.
Most of my Mr. Jewett, second to my Ms. Lee. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So next on our agenda is the fiscal twenty five tentative budget. I am asking for approval for a public hearing date to be set at Monday, September twenty third. Twenty twenty four at six fifty five PM. But in keeping with transparency for not only you as a board, but as our community, there's just a couple of slides that I'd like to walk through with you. So as we talk about the tentative budget process, per Illinois School Court Code, the school district is required to have a tentative budget on display for thirty days. Prior to adoption, that date would then start tomorrow. Um pending Board of Education approval, um the tentative budget not only would start tomorrow, but also. A public hearing date would be officially set on September twenty third, twenty twenty four at six fifty five PM. A required legal notice would also be published in a newspaper of local circulation, which is the Chicago Tribune, Lake County News Sun. Starting tomorrow. When we talk about the budget process, just a couple of highlights for you. The budget uh must be approved by September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And the final budget must also be submitted to our Regional Office of Education and the Illinois State Board of Education within thirty days. Of Board of Education approval. When we took a look at the overall makeup of the budget for fiscal twenty five tentative. Um I budgeted approximately thirty one percent of our local property tax collection, certainly student fees. Um our evidence-based funding for fiscal twenty five, our new money that we have received and uh have confirmed. For fiscal twenty five is two million, four hundred and seventy seven thousand, three forty four and thirteen. We also have some res- uh approval for some state and federal grants. Those are in the revenue side and also the interest. On investments and any rebates from procurement cards. When we look at the historical perspective of our uh evidence-based funding, again, we are a tier one district going back to fiscal twenty two. Our tier one EBF funding was sixty six million, six sixty two, three thirty and eighty seven cents. As you look at fiscal twenty three and twenty four, you're gonna see a larger jump there. That larger jump is reflective of the property tax relief grant. When we are awarded those funds, it's included in what we call our base fit minimum funding. So those dollars are are uh reflective of not only our new money, but also our grant. And so then when we look at fiscal twenty five, our new money, if the two million is added to the seventy seven, five forty nine, four fourteen eighty. You uh receive our fiscal twenty five tier one money that's there. As we look at the expenditures, we certainly are uh have to budget for our salaries for our current employees. There's also a placeholder in there for remaining open positions. Um insurance costs are always a little bit of an unknown at this point. Not all staff needs to determine what their insurance uh selections are, so. That's something that will be firmed up in the next couple of weeks. And also in the tentative budget, unlike previous tentative budgets that I presented to the board, there is a four million dollar transfer in there from. Fund ten to fund sixty. There is on the table some potential property acquisition that the board has discussed. And that transfer is there now. It will save us an additional hearing, and I think it also brings to uh light some transparency. As a reminder, the board did approve a contract for seven hundred thousand dollars for Zero Heart Road, pending some due diligence testing. We have submitted seventy thousand dollars in the escrow fund in fiscal twenty four, so there would be a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar. Remaining balance that would come out of the four million dollars that I'm proposing in the transfer here. When we look at what our overall operating funds are, our operating funds as a school district are fund ten, fund twenty, fund forty. And fund seventy. Those are the funds that Illinois State Board of Education looks at and our financial profile score or our report card score. So as you see that, our expenditures do not exceed our revenues, and at this point I'm recommending. A balanced fiscal twenty five tentative budget. So looking at an overall tentative budget summary, again, expenditures overall do not exceed our revenues. Our evidence-based funding EBF mon- uh money is a tier one status. I will continue to monitor what staff and student needs are, certainly fiscal uh prudence with our spending and also. Be in adherence with our Board of Education policies. As we look at the unknowns, these unknowns aren't much different than previous unknowns. There's always potential for unfunded mandates. There's also potential for hard to fill positions that we might have to seek an agency for. Property tax collection, property tax appeals. We've had some conversations about a majority of the things up here. Certainly any instructional needs to support our our students and our staff, and then if there's any unanticipated staffing changes. As we look at our operating funds, as I've mentioned earlier, this is straight from the ISBE webs uh web sheet that we're required to uh complete. And it states very clearly that a deficit reduction plan is not needed. This is the ISBE checklist stating that we've done all the things correctly when we've completed what we need to do uh for submission, again, at the tentative side. And then in conclusion, just wanted to share with the board in celebration of all of your work and support, the financial profile scores. You are noticing in fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we did receive recognition status and we are to three point six zero. However, in twenty one through fiscal twenty three, we did increase that by ten basis points to three point seven, still retaining recognition status. And that uh last quote, an investment in knowledge pays the best interest, is still one of my favorites to share with you.
Thank you, Dr. Kibbins. Any questions for Dr. Kibbins in regards to that?
No questions, but I did wanna add again, this was on the finance agenda this evening and reviewed with Dr. Kibbins, Dr. Mendoza. Um and of course, um the hearing that will uh should occur on September twenty third. All right, and with that, I need a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty five tentative budget as presented and approve the public hearing date. Of Monday, September twenty third, twenty twenty four at six fifty five PM.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, second to my Mr. Jewett. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that brings us to our twenty four, twenty five semester one overnight field trips. Dr. King?
Yes, we are seeking approval for our um uh annual field trips. We have three for the high school and one for each of the middle schools. Our high school is the Augustana Choir Field Trip, as well as Boys and Girls Wrestling, and our two middle schools are the Springfield Trips. I have each of the administrators here to answer any questions that you might have about any of these trips.
Questions other than why, why one of our administrators is over here, not over with the rest of them? Just giving you a hard time.
And just confirming background checks correct on all volunteers. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I I have a general question first, uh cause I see it's, you know, um overnight field trips for the first most semester, so will these be. Coming forward with that kind of cycle, that kind of cadence?
That is correct.
Um then then now it's for athletics for the high school again, we, I know we've changed the. Hospitality, I guess, the hotels, what they were using for our athletes. I don't like getting calls in the middle of the night.
Yeah, we have established a uh, for lack of a better term, a standard operating procedure for uh hotel rooms. Whenever possible, we're gonna use a Hampton Inn, cause there's lots of them, they're clean, they're well-run, they're moderately priced. Um like I said, they're everywhere. So yeah, both for the girls' wrestling trip uh to Madison, Wisconsin and. Uh the boys' trip, these are repeats of of trips we took last year. Um and the the boys' trip to Wisconsin Whitewater, they'll be staying at a Hampton Inn or. Uh if that's not accessible, a a a hotel of of similar, similar level and accommodations.
Yeah, I mean, I hope that's the standard we use, not even just for athletics actually, but for all our students that we. Uh taking any type of trip, whether you know, it's, I mean, I know Springfield's not overnight, but uh you know, uh Washington DC and all those other trips that. We use a level of accommodation that we would want to stay in and nothing subpart of that.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. We actually last year in a like got in alignment as middle schools to do that for our wrestling as well.
Perfect.
And I'll actually just throw out, I love this format and having it and having a group together like this well ahead of time. Uh so thank you for that and thank you for that update.
You're welcome. We al- we also anticipate the second semester field trips coming to the, to the uh October board meeting, so very early.
Um I'm gonna throw out there one other question slash, I'm sure y'all are gonna do that. Um. Plans for where kids are sleeping are gonna be uh planned ahead of time, so there won't be any issues of people sleeping.
Plans for where kids are sleeping are gonna be uh planned ahead of time, so there won't be any issues of people sleeping on floors. Right, okay. Yes.
A question regarding the Springfield trips for the two middle schools. Uh, do you happen to know about maybe how many, what's the max you can take and is it just eighth graders, right? Or seventh graders, I've forgotten it.
It's just seventh graders and it's different per building, so at McGee, um, we can take a max of a hundred students. We did an interest survey with the sixth graders at the end of last year to kind of gauge how many students we were going to be interested in, um, because of the charter buses and a hundred is going to be our cutoff.
Roughly the numbers are the same, we're looking at one-ten to one-twenty is the max.
What is the cost for the student to attend?
Right now, there's sixty-five dollars per student.
Are there scholarship opportunities for students who want to attend but maybe can't afford to attend?
At this time, no, but we're looking for next year and figuring out ways we can obviously raise funds. One of those is going to be concessions that the students can run to in- increase the funding that we can use as a scholarship fund.
So do you max out every year of students who can go to Springfield?
No, we did not max out last year. Round Lake Middle School, I don't know, but I know.
I know it's new for you, so I know it's not fair for you. We got three McGee people here now, or former, but anyway. So what what has been the participation rate then for Springfield? I mean, sixty-five dollars is it's high, but it's not, I mean, I'm trying to think, gosh, when my kids went, it was like thirty-five bucks or something.
Flex when her kids went. Ms. Lee and I know that we didn't, there wasn't even an option.
I can't help COVID.
Um, to answer your question, we had about eighty-five students that went last year. Um, and then the interest survey showed around seventy to eighty that were interested in this upcoming year. That's why we put a max at a hundred to allow that leeway for any other additional students that might be interested.
I do have just one quick question on the max. Why, why theoretically are there, is there a different max between each school?
Yep, so the answer on that is based on busing because it raises the cost significantly. If the only, the bu- charter buses only holds a certain amount of students, and if you go over that threshold, which we did last year at McGee, which proved to be a little bit of a mistake, because if you go over by three to five kids and you have to have another bus, the price goes up for everybody. And it goes up to a to a uh a level where some kids actually can't go, and that's what happened last year.
So the hundred and I I'm just uh, cause I heard a hundred and twenty and a hundred, so that twenty is an extra bus? Twenty kids is one bus?
No, um, but the buses didn't have to be full per se for around like middle last year to actually have enough students to actually go. So they they had one-ten last year, correct?
Okay, I I was just curious as to, it just seemed weird to have that cutoff where, cause I would assume two buses for each school, so they should theoretically be the same numbers.
So one thing I I don't want to forget to say is our goal is to make sure that no student ends up in a situation where they can't go if they really wanna go. So last year, we actually had staff volunteer and sponsor students um, to to be able to fill the last bus because the cost was skyrocketing because we went over on over. So we actually had staff actually help support other students who wouldn't have been able to go, and because that was such a great experience, um, we talked about how to make sure, like John mentioned, having money offset so that all students have the opportunity to go. We don't ever want to see someone not go. Who wants to go?
Yes, what kind of scholarship opportunities or what's available for those students who really want to go, but it is maybe out of a financial reach.
All right, I think that's the convo, so.
I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five semester one field trips overnight and over two-hundred miles away.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second to my Mrs. Klingler. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call, please.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that brings us to the Round Lake High School Theater updates.
Thank you, Board of Education, for letting us present to you on this proposal. The Round Lake High School Theater has some upgrades, much-needed upgrades that are that are well-needed. Um, so what we have prepared for you is a proposal that kind of, we know there's one. The lights are an issue at this time, they do not function right. Um, and in looking at it, we're, we discussed the fact that we should probably just become, like, make it a whole picture kind of proposal to see all of the things that need to be fixed and update updated in the theater. Um, we phased it out into three different phases, so phase one is kind of the most emergent phase, that's the lighting. And we included the curtains, cause those do need to be updated. Um, and it actually is a cost-saving to do those two together. Um, because we'll have the same company do, like, the same company would be doing both of those. And they would be on-site and the shipping for the materials would be the same, like, at the same time. Um, and we also included the theater booth, uh, that's where the lighting, the light board and the light. We we house a lot of the lighting equipment and the sound equipment when it's not being used. Um, it's old, we found out it was in the nineties that 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 uh counter was installed. It is showing somewhere, it's leaning, it needs a little bit more structural support. Um, so that's why that is included in that first phase. Phase two is more of the audience experience phase. Um, it's the theater seats, the painting of the walls and the carpeting. Um, the seats are the original seats from back when it was uh installed, the theater was put in. We did reupholster them about fifteen or so years ago, but we didn't do anything to the structure of those seats. Um, I know many of you have sat in those seats and have experienced those seats. So we threw, we decided to include those in this proposal. Um, we also um included the painting, the the theater and the carpeting and the flooring in the theater, which is also showing its wear and tear. Phase three is, um, we're still getting costs for phase three, we're still looking at costs for those, but those things are things with, like, the stage floor and the, an extension to the stage to make the stage a little bit bigger for some of the productions and some of the ex- um performances that we do. And the um doors, sound dampening doors, so that way you won't hear as much sound bleeding in from outside. And if, when the door is closed, they won't slam, cause some of them do have those those slamming aspects of it.
So we are seeking approval for the first phase of this. Um, the second phase um um would be uh the following year. And then the third phase, we're not even bringing that forward yet. Those are just, that's just information because we still have a lot of fact-finding before we would even be confident or comfortable in proposing that.
So this was on the finance agenda, and I think the reason why Dr. King mentions phase three being fact-finding is if you read the memo, that stage four was redone back in twenty-eighteen, which really isn't that long ago. The board had approved for that stage to be redone. Um, so the questions that came out of that is, well, what what's supposed to be the life of that floor? I understand it is showing wear and tear, the theaters will, they're they're abused, just like our athletic fields are, they're used daily. And we have a great fine arts program, but what is the life cycle of that floor? Is it five years, is it ten, twenty? Cause we don't, we already put money and cost and time into that, we want to make sure we're mindful of the resources that we put into the building. So there is some fact-finding that needs to happen for that phase, which is why they're not coming forward with that one yet. But the lighting, as we know, needs to be addressed. And the phase one is what administration is wanting to move forward with. Which the Finance Committee is in support of, however, the other phases, um, as, you know, we talked in finance, uh, Mr. De Vera and I, there's a cadence of, they bring the list of projects for the summer, we look at the budget, you know, how how are we gonna tackle these, what are we gonna do? We want to kind of reverse that this year because, as you see, there's, the the theater has a need, it absolutely has a need. All of us are fine arts parents, we go to all the the plays, the performances. We know those seats aren't comfortable, we know that theater is showing age, that theater was built in the seventies, and not much has been done to it. Original seats, which we know how uncomfortable they are. Uh, so yeah, we want to do those things, but you know, we know we have a elevator for Murphy. We, as we, as you heard the sound system today, you heard Mr. Kozak talk about there's supposed to be a phase two. So there's a lot of lists, so usually they bring the list, then we meet and we tackle what we're gonna do, we're gonna reverse that this year. Mr. De Vera and I will meet with Dr. Lampin and Dr. King, look at the list ahead of time and how we're gonna proceed. But we are in support of phase one, those lights need to happen. We know we've, we've seen some issues with some of our plays already. Or I don't know if it was their plays, but those plays were, you know, lighting wasn't working.
I would agree.
Best in the business. Any additional conversation?
All right, then with that, I need a motion to approve the recommendation for the Round Lake High School Theater Project Phase One.
So moved. Second.
Much of my Ms. Lee, second to my Mrs. Klingler. Roll call, please.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to our presenter agreements for BPAC and PAC and Miss.
So we have two agreements on the agenda for approval tonight. These are parent resource sessions that we have scheduled for BPAC and PAC. The first one is Fernie Ramirez, who you're familiar with. He's our normal presenter for PAC, and the other one is um M C D, it's the new presenter this year, who'll be providing presentations in English.
So this was on finance as well, so some of the questions that came forward were, uh, was there an option to stream these events? But some presenters don't allow, and I understand it, it is their intellectual property, so they don't. But it's always worth asking, cause again, not all our parents can attend these events. So what are the ways can we uh optimize opportunity for our parents? They will have handouts that we'll be able to share with our families. So again, while we can't stream, uh, at least the materials that will be handed out to those in attendance, those can be shared with our community and staff. And licenses and insurance were all checked out, too. All right, no questions, I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five BPAC PAC presenter agreements with Dr. Fernie Ramirez and M C D Educational Consultants.
So moved. Second.
Much of my Mr. Jewett, second to my Mrs. Larson. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call, please.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. And now that will bring us to our pre-act online assessments, and Dr. Stefan.
Sorry, I got excited about assessment, I guess. That's not very common.
Said no one ever.
I know. Um, I am bringing forward, uh, with the state, with ISB moving away from the S A T to the A C T. We had to switch course rather quickly, um, which leads us to wanting to be able to have additional data. We also, with the move of moving away from N W E A MAP into I Ready, that is our new benchmark assessment for our K through eights. We used to do the MAP test in nine through ten, so we now need to have additional benchmark data so we can monitor progress for student growth and student proficiency at the high school level with our strategic plan and with school improvement. So with that being said, the State of Illinois pays for the spring test for freshmen, sophomores and juniors. Um, and then they leave it up to us. Uh, so we would like to administer the pre-A C T assessments, there's a pre-A C T eighth, ninth grade assessment, as well as a pre-A C T that's for sophomores and juniors. And we would like to administer that in the fall and October. Again, we'll use that as a benchmark assessment. The total cost is twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, and we're looking for the board's uh support in this purchase.
And just for clarification, so for like, especially the current juniors are kind of the ones that are caught in this turmoil, so to speak. Because they would have gone through the P S A T eight, nine, even the P S A T ten. And now all of a sudden, the, what this is gonna do is allow them to take a a pre-A C T coming up basically next week is what we're saying, I mean, October, but um, and then turn around and then they would actually do the A C T in the spring of the of their junior year, is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct, yes, all freshmen, sophomores and the juniors, and you're right, juniors, we both have one, uh, Mr. Francisco. Um, so yeah, our juniors are the ones that have to figure out kind of the difference and navigate the two different tests. And I think having a test upfront in October will definitely be helpful. They might not say that, but we think so.
Yeah.
So again, this was on finance, so we had some questions come out of finance. Um, one is how will this be pushed or delivered to the students, um, through, it's an app we already use. It'll just be pushed um to those students here at the high school. And then how will that data uh be sent or used and delivered to the board, cause this will be different. Uh, with, and I know Dr. Stefan said she just attended a class or seminar or?
Yeah, there's an organization in um northern Illinois, it's the Chicago Curriculum, Cr- Chicago Consortium of Curri- I don't know. CADCA, I don't, Kurt can probably tell me exactly what that stands for. Chicago Area Curriculum Directors? Yeah, there you go. Um, they actually had a speaker come on from A C R A. We used to have a contract with A C R A for a lot of data, um, and they offered to be able to do A C T to, as well, S A T to A C T conversions. Um, and I had our district, um, well, actually Kurt passed on the invite to our district data specialist, Eileen, and she attended. And she was able to look, take a look at their conversion charts and help us look through what will our kids. It it helps you make a level of like prediction as to what your averages will look like, because obviously your scores are, it's a different scoring metric, so.
Yeah, that's why, like, how will that be delivered to the board so that we can digest and understand how or how not well our students are doing? That's what came out of finance.
All right, hearing no additional questions.
Need a motion for the approval of partnership with A C T for the pre-A C T assessments for grades nine through eleven.
So moved. Second.
Much of my Mr. Jewett, second to my Ms. Lee. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call, please.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to positive occurrences. I will go ahead and start, I've got my laundry list. I'm gonna actually open it up with, I was so honored to be invited to attend the Boy Scouts of America Eagle Scout Court of Honor on Sunday, the eleventh, um, at the Round Lake Civic Center. It was an amazing event. Uh, thank you, Mr. Pafalde, uh, and the Boy Scout team for the invitation to that. Um, it was absolutely amazing to be able to be there, um, and it was just a great seeing what our youth is capable of when they're, when they're challenged. Um, so that was just an amazing event, and thank you for my ability to be there. Um, in addition, that next day on Monday, I was able to go with uh Dr. Mendoza to the Ed Red Legislative Breakfast. Uh, we were able to sit down with state legislators from across the districts here in northern Illinois. Uh, had really good conversations. Um, and again, that's that legislative component that we've been talking about. Uh, National Night Out was uh amazing across all the villages. And then uh my hat's off to the, all the administration, teachers, uh, staff, everyone for the back-to-school, as well as all the meet-and-greets and open houses. Um, everything there in getting that first week of school up and running. Um, we we have our hiccups, we know that, but we're working through them, um, but great job all in all.
I have two, um, I just want to thank the team. I have two. Um, I just wanna thank the team. We've, you know, we've got a little work to do with transportation, um, but we are, we're working really, really hard, and we look at the progress we made on the EEC. We hit the bunch timeline and getting that open. We've got, I know it's hard, it doesn't seem that long ago, we got newly configured elementary schools. And I can tell you, I know factually speaking, at least from the staff's perspective, it's been a really, really good start. I also wanna take a moment to, uh, thank Dr. Rowling for his service. Um, I believe this is your last board meeting, is that correct? Last one here. Hey, no more, uh, P-card updates here, right? So, um, yeah, so. So Kurt, is this your seven or six for you here?
This is, uh, year six point two.
Six. Yeah, so just, you know, the one thing I would, among many I could say about him, I don't wanna monopolize all the time, but just, and one of the things I just appreciate is he has a heart for our kids here in Round Lake. I kinda knew that when we hired him from District Three Hundred. He's local from Wakanda, but, you know, Kurt has always been very, very easy to work with. His heart is always in the right place, he's committed. Um, just, we're, we're just grateful to have people like him, he's a good person, so I wanna, you know, thank you, Kurt. You're gonna be, um, you'll be working a lot more in the next job. Uh, but you're, you know, we, I'm actually very pleased for him because I think his experiences here in this district played a significant role in getting this job that he has as a superintendent of a large unit district, and actually the board, you've been a part of that. I mean, you've been, you know, giving him feedback and, and asking questions, and, and, and I'm serious about that. That's how people grow and develop, so we have a very, very, very high-functioning school board with very high expectations. And so, um, I think that's gonna serve him well in his next, um, his next journey. You need anything, we're here, got a big team here to help. If you need anything, please don't be, be afraid to ask. But wanted to, you know, I wish there was more people here, but, but really, I think, hey, Mr. Gafaldo, no one. But just very, very thankful for Kurt's service and, and the way he went about his business around lakes, I just wanna thank him, so.
Uh, so I did want to add, I know Dr. Mendoza talked about the completion of EEC, our little, small construction project over the summer. Um, I did have the opportunity to have a course with, with Dr. King, um, you know, uh, Dr. Lamping and Dr. Rowling in regards to that for finance and facilities. So it is, um, completed. There's still a little few things that need to be done, but I really wanted to call out, you know, um, Mr. Mark Birick, uh, who managed the project, who did a great job, I know. Probably caused some blood pressure, high blood pressure a few days, but he did a great job, and we look forward to coordinating the ribbon-cutting, uh, with the board and you visiting that facility. And then I really also wanted to mention, uh, the day that I visited, uh, all the custodians from the whole district were at that building helping, getting things moved in, cleaned up, and they were working hard. So, uh, really a shout-out to the custodians of the district who really helped put that school together those last couple days.
Um, so it's marching band season, and they had, um, their first night where they kind of rolled out what they've been working on, and it was just so pleasure to see all the kids, and, um, I personally now have two kids in marching band currently, which isn't overshare, but uh, it's just, it's so nice to see the accountability that they're held to. Um, I think there, there's a lot of far-reaching kind of benefits to this, these types of programs, and um, it was just nice to see the kids working hard and kind of seeing what they've been doing every day for so many countless hours. So I just wanted to highlight that.
I also wanna share, um, the National Night Out, seeing the band perform, and knowing they had spent like a week, was it a week, maybe two, I think it was only one week. Learning the music was wow. I mean, I can only imagine how, how the show was gonna go this year for them, but they were really incredible. Having just had a week, it was, it was awesome, so they did great.
All right, hearing no additional, we'll move to future gen items. Anyone have any future gen items they wish to present? Hearing none, we'll move to approval of closed session minutes reviewed at the prior meetings.
I need a motion to approve the closed, release of previously unreleased closed session meeting minutes from July twenty-twenty-two through December twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mrs. Larson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the destruction of closed session audio recordings for December twenty-twenty-two and prior.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mrs. Klingler. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call, please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes of July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, regular board meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mrs. Larson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to, I need a motion to convene in closed session as permitted by Section Five I L C S one-twenty slash two for the purposes discussing the following. Employment Matters, five I L C S one-twenty slash two C one, and Real Estate Matters, five I L C S one-twenty slash two C five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mrs. Klingler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries, and that will end our open session for the evening. Thank you all for attending locally as well as online. Uh, we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting, and everyone have a great evening.